You're watching Cable 2.
Good evening and welcome to the May 23rd, 2023 Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education meeting. I am Deanna Kaplan, Board Chair, and I appreciate your attendance. And I also say good evening to our viewers on Cable 2. Will you please rise as we start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance? And remain standing as you are able for the invocation given by Board Member Susan Miller.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
May we pray. God, we place our work and ourselves into your hands. When we are challenged, guide us. When we are weary, energize us. May the work that we do as a school board and the way that we do it bring hope, life, and courage to all within our school district. Bless our school board with wisdom and discernment, our teachers and staff with commitment and compassion, and our students and their families with courage and strength. Amen.
Amen.
Our first order of business tonight is the agenda review. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda to return to close after our business meeting tonight?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, have a motion by Vice Chair Bohannon, a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, that's unanimous. Our next order of business is our student performance. Please join me in welcoming the Mineral Springs Theater.
............ There's another shiny place that you might see some night up in the sky. Living high. It's your planet Janet, she's a galaxy girl. Our solar system is from a future world. Shadows like a rocket with a comet team. And there's never been a planet Janet hasn't seen. No, there's never been a planet Janet hasn't seen. Get to the sun, it's a lot of fun. High is the hotspot, it's a gas. Hydrogen and helium in a big bright glowing mess. It's a star, it's a star. So Janet died on the ground. Uh-huh. Mercury was near the sun, so Janet stopped by. But the mercury, oh mercury, was too hot, so Janet stopped her feet and she died. She couldn't see anything, she followed clouds around. It was kind of green and bright, so Janet thought she could get a go. But the creatures on that planet were so very weird, Janet. She didn't even dare to say hello. It's a plan, it's a plan. Why it must be a UFO? Only one. It's a planet Janet, she's a galaxy girl. Our solar system is from a future world. Shadows like a rocket with a comet team. And there's never been a planet Janet hasn't seen. No, there's never been a planet Janet hasn't seen. All this man in Jupiter's name has shown off the things. She wanted to throw out a new planet too, and that's when he disappeared. A beautiful blue, so far as the sun is far more red. Stay your solar system is not alone in space. The universe have endless mystery. So if you ask your mind, you find out that what you want. What she saw instead turned out to be... It's a planet Janet, she's a galaxy girl. Our solar system is from a future world. Shadows like a rocket with a comet team. And there's never been a planet Janet hasn't seen. No, there's never been a planet Janet hasn't seen.
Oh, that was just so great. That was wonderful. Our next order of business is our special recognitions. First, the wonderful book donation by the Winston-Salem Alumni Chapter of the Delta Sigma Theta, presented by Dr. Paula Wilkins, our Chief Academic Officer.
Good evening, Board Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, members of the Board, and Superintendent McManus. It is with great pleasure that I'd like to recognize a group of phenomenal women who spent over 110 years dedicating scholarship sisterhood and service, and over 85 years in our community. The Winston-Salem Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta has been a great partner and another community organization dedicated to help support our 90 by 25 initiative. We know, just like we learned today with our reading warriors, that we need our community engaged with us to help us to make transformational change for our students. I'd like to invite the President of the Winston-Salem Alumni Chapter, Camille French, to come up and just share about the partnership, and hopefully a few things that we're going to collaborate on ahead in support of our students. Sororice French.
Well, good evening to Superintendent McManus, Board Chair Kaplan, and the entire school board. The Winston-Salem Alumni Chapter would just like to thank you all for the opportunity to speak before you tonight. Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated is an organization that has been dedicated to sisterhood, service, social action, and scholarship for over 110 years. We in the Winston-Salem Alumni Chapter have stayed true to the sorority's mission in this community for over 85, almost 85 years. We are keenly aware of the district's commitment to reach its goal of 90% reading proficiency by the year 2025. And we, as a chapter, are committed to partnering with you and local schools to help achieve this objective. In April, we hosted our Regional Delta Authors on Tour event, where eight Delta Women came and showcased their literary talents within the Winston-Salem community. Through generous giving of our community, regional partners, and sororors, we are able to give a sizable donation of books to Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools. I would like at this time to ask the Winston-Salem Alumni Chapter members that are present to please stand as we make this presentation. We will be placing the book entitled, "What Can I Be: STEM Careers from A to Z", along with its accompanying teacher's guide by author Tiffany Techie, who hails from Winston-Salem in each elementary school in the district. We will also be placing the novel, "You Truly Assumed", by author Leila Sabrine, who is a young adult and a recent graduate of Emory University, in every middle and high school in the district. We know that these books will enrich our young people's lives and futures. We will continue to provide resources and volunteers to help move the needle on the district's 90 by 25 initiative. We have reached out to North Hills Elementary School and are currently working with them to provide volunteers as well as events that will benefit the school and the community. Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated always stands ready to serve. We are a proud partner in this Winston-Salem community, and we ask that you call upon us at any time for resources and for needs. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, Carol Chandler will present the poet laureate winner.
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
Our first place poet laureate winner of this year, unfortunately could not, she had to cancel at the very last minute. Her name is Gufran ABD. She is a junior at Parkland and really enjoys poetry. So we wanted to recognize her regardless, and I will certainly be taking her certificate to Parkland next week to give to her. We are also giving the Board a copy of 2023 Fresh Voices Rising. It's a combination of poetry and artwork from a lot of our high school students. I think we have 27 poets and 29, that's right, 27 poets and 29 artists. So I hope you enjoy that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for this beautiful book.
Chairperson Kaplan, I just want to make a comment. I attended the poet laureate here a month ago, month and a half ago. It was absolutely great. And I encourage all of you all, if you ever have a chance next year to come, please come. You will so enjoy it. You'll hear from our students and their thoughts and their processes. And you really, I think that would be the top of your list of some enjoyment. So please try to join us next year for it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, Melissa Agi, Director of the Secondary English Language Arts, will present the Maya Angelou Essay Contest winners.
Good evening, Board Chair Kaplan, Superintendent McManus, and Board Members. I'm Melissa Agi, the Director for Secondary ELA. It is my pleasure to be here tonight to recognize this year's winners of the Dr. Maya Angelou Essay Contest. Mr. Guy Johnson, Dr. Maya Angelou's son, envisioned a contest that would encourage high school seniors to write personal narratives of when they have felt marginalized or stereotyped, and how they overcame those challenges. This year, we had 68 seniors submit essays. That is the most we have ever had. The stories that were shared through these essays are powerful. It is through these stories of heartbreak and triumph that we get a brief glimpse into the experiences of the students who walk our halls every day. Narrowing down from 68 to top three was incredibly challenging. I'd like to thank all of those in Instructional Services who scored the 68 essays. The top nine were scored and discussed by a panel of community judges, which included Ms. The Maya Tutte, CEO of the Dr. Maya Angelou Foundation. As I recognize our winners, if you would come forward and receive your check. In third place, with an award of $1,800, Andy Hamilton from Atkins High School. In second place, with an award of $3,000, Matt Dishman from Reynolds High School. Our first place winner could not be here tonight. However, our first place winner is Scotty Lippi from Parkland High School with an award of $5,000. Accepting this award is Mr. Evan Moore, who is the English teacher at Career Center for all three of these students. So I'd also like to recognize Mr. Evan Moore for his dedication to our students. I'd like to invite their principals, Dr. Martinez, Dr. Nichols, Mr. Freeman, and Ms. Keener, if you would come forward in support of your students as well. Congratulations to all of our winners. Best of luck to you as you graduate from high school and journey on. Thank you. And I promise the real checks are coming.
Next, John Sullivan, our District Athletic Director, will present the Spring Sports State Champions.
Chair Kaplan, Ms. McManus, members of the Board, thank you for having us here this evening as we recognize our North Carolina High School Athletic Association Outdoor Track and Field State Champions. We'll start with our relay team from Carver High School. They ran in the 1A Division and they won the 4x1 and 4x200 meters. We have James Harris, Rashard Norwood, Chase Ivy, and Derek Reed Jr. Next, from Parkland, in the 4A Division, girls. Again, we have a double champion in the 4x100 meter relay and the 4x200 meter relay. Promise Davis, Iana Gray-Williams, Zaya Etchison, Otera Dubose, and Megan Hatcher were members of these two relays. For Carver, I'd like to recognize their Coach Carter and Coach Shakir and Principal Maxwell, who are here this evening, and Athletic Director Danny Pigott. And for Parkland, their coach is Antoine Hughes and their principal is Ms. Noel Keener. She's also present this evening. And now on to our individual champions. In the 2A, from Waukertown High School, Mariah Perry, the 100-meter hurdle champion. She is coached by her father. In the 4A Division, in the high jump, Jonathan Koger from Reagan High School. Coach Shelf and AP Mr. Jackson are present this evening. In the 4A Division, from West Forsyth, Tyson Adams, the long jump champion. Tyson is coached by Coach Newsome, who is present this evening. Once again, congratulations to our champions in this outdoor season.
Next, Kenya Rocker, our Lead Counselor of Student Services, will present our scholarship recipients.
Good evening. I am Kenya Rocker, the Lead School Counselor, Lead High School Counselor. And I have the pleasure of recognizing a few of our students who have competed and been awarded some of the most selective local, state, and national scholarships. These students have endured lengthy applications, excelled on admissions tests, sat through nerve-wracking interviews, and participated in college visits on their journey in attaining these prestigious scholarships. So thank you to Superintendent McManus and our school board for allowing me this time to recognize just a few of our students and their achievements. First, I would like to just acknowledge that despite this being our first full year back, two norms established prior to the pandemic, our Winston-Salem Forsyth County Senior Class of 2023 is still on pace to have over $80 million in scholarship offers and counting. So we are here just to recognize a few of these shining stars. So I will start with two of our local scholarships that are dear to Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools, the Cash-Ibrahim Scholarship and the Winston-Salem Memorial Scholarship. The Cash-Ibrahim Scholarship Fund was established and is maintained by contributions from local schools, PTAs, to honor Thomas H. Cash, a former Forsyth County Superintendent, and Prince Ibrahim, a former member of the Forsyth County Board of Education. One student from each high school can be nominated for both of these scholarships. And we look for need, potential, unique aptitudes, leadership, and scholarship. The selection committee for both of these scholarships consists of myself, a member of the Board of Education, and this year we had Board Member Watts, and he's going to help us to pass out certificates tonight, and a member of the PTA Council, who is also here with us, Mr. Donald Dunn. So this year's recipient of the Cash-Ibrahim Scholarship is Trenton Dozier of East Forsyth. Trenton plans to attend Winston-Salem State University in the fall, where he plans to major in sports management. The Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools Memorial Fund is established by the Board of Education to honor educators and school board members who have served the school system. This scholarship is awarded in the same way as the Cash-Ibrahim Scholarship. And the recipient of this year's scholarship is Ms. Vanessa Stewart of North Forsyth High School. Vanessa will also study at Winston-Salem State University in the fall, where she plans to study nursing. So we have such a tough job every year trying to choose just two. So our Forsyth PTA Council, with the generosity of the PTA Council and our Board Member Richard Roth here, they decided to sponsor two additional scholarships this year in the amount of $500. So we have here for one of those Forsyth PTA Council scholarships, Ms. Zuri Swett from Reagan. I mean, from West, I am sorry. Zuri will attend UNC Chapel Hill, where she will major in political science with a minor in English. The other scholarship from PTA Council will go to Ms. Taniska Sharma, who is not here with us. She attends Reagan, and she will be attending Wake Forest University with a major in Biology in Women's Studies. So we will recognize her. All right, we would like to next recognize our Levine Scholar for this year. The Levine Scholars Program is at the University of North Carolina at Charlotte. It takes the brightest, most capable students and gives them the tools, resources, and environment they need to explore the world around them. There is a four-year scholarship that includes full tuition, room, board, and is valued at approximately $105,000 for in-state students. I am happy to announce that Ms. Alicia Washington of Reynolds High School is a Levine Scholar. Alicia plans to major in nursing in the fall. Very similar to the Levine Scholarship is the Morehead-Kane Scholarship at UNC Chapel Hill. It's the first merit scholarship program in the United States. We have one recipient of the Morehead-Kane Scholarship this year. She's not here with us tonight, but I'd like to recognize her, Ms. Addison Truzy of Reynolds, will receive, has received the Morehead-Kane Scholarship. The Park Scholars Program is for exceptional students at NC State and very much based on community service, leadership, character, and scholarship. It too is a fully funded four-year scholarship. In addition, research projects and travel abroad is funded. And we have two young ladies who received that scholarship who are not with us tonight, Ella Brooke Morgan of West Forsyth and Isabella Pan of Reynolds High School. The Quest Bridge National College Match Scholarship was founded in 1994 by a nonprofit that connects the nation's most exceptional youth with leading colleges and opportunities. The National College Match application gives students the space to tell their unique story as students who have excelled academically despite financial hardship. Match scholarship recipients are granted early admission and full four-year tuition. These scholarships are with Quest Bridge Partners, who are private universities, and so they are valued at more than $200,000. And we are proud this year to have three Quest Bridge winners. Adrian Johnson of Atkins High School, who will attend Emory University. Adrian plans to major in biology, chemistry, on the pre-med track. We also have Stephanie Mares Contreras, who will be attending Stanford University. And Stephanie will be studying political science. You're getting these doctors and lawyers in the room. We also have Aunt LaLo of Mount Tabor, who will receive the Quest Bridge Scholarship at Davidson College, who is not with us tonight. And next, we have the National Merit Scholarship Program, founded in 1955 as an annual academic competition. Students are entered into the National Merit Scholarship Program by their PSAT score in their 11th grade school year. So currently, about 1.5 million students are entered into the competition with from 21,000 high schools. That is then narrowed down to 50,000 entrants who qualify for program recognition, then to 15,000 finalists, and then to only 7,200 students nationally who are awarded the scholarship. We are very proud to have two students who have been awarded that scholarship, Ms. Katie Swain of Atkins High School. Katie will attend Duke University in majoring in mechanical engineering. And we also have William Thompson of Atkins High School, who is not with us, who will attend Vanderbilt University. Last but definitely not least, we are pleased this year that we have actually five Winston-Salem Forsyth County School students who have received appointments to one of our four United States Military Academies. We honor these students both for their scholarship and their commitment to serve in our country. These students had to attain a nomination from a member of Congress or state senator for their appointments. They also participated in one of the most extensive screening processes of graduating high school seniors. These Military Academy appointments offer a fully funded, four-year academic scholarship, physical and mental education that develops personal character, leads to a bachelor's degree, graduates employability, graduates with employability as a trusted leader, and employs them in a rewarding profession as an officer upon graduation. These scholarships are two, also all valued at more than $200,000. So first, we have Donovan Allen of West Forsyth, who received an appointment to West Point. Donovan will study mechanical engineering. Next, we have Connor Danoson of Atkins High School, who too received an appointment at West Point. He too will be a mechanical engineering major. Next, we have Broderick Freeman of Atkins High School, who received an appointment to the United States Naval Academy. Broderick will study oceanography. Next, we have Mason Newman of Mount Tabor High School, who received an appointment to the Coast Guard Academy. Mason will study naval architecture and marine engineering. And lastly, we have Kate Walls of Reynolds High School, who received an appointment to the United States Naval Academy. She too will study naval architecture and marine engineering. And I just learned today that Joseph Lapina of Reagan High School received an appointment to the Air Force Academy. So these are still coming. We'd like to recognize them. So thank you so much for giving a little bit of your time to recognize these shining stars, who we hope will come back to our community with some of this productivity, right?
Being here with these students on the stage, it's what it's all about. That's why we're here. Just, woo, very exciting. Next, Donald Dunn from PTA Council will present the PTA Reflection winners.
Good evening. My name is Donald Dunn. I am with the Winston-Salem Forsyth County PTA Council. I want to say hello to Chairman Kaplan, the board, as well as Ms. McManus and the audience. Reflection is our national program that deals with the arts. It deals with art, it deals with photography, visual arts, music, dance, dance, and then we're looking at literature. We are so fortunate to have so many talented young kids here in the county. Reflections, you can win at your school level, then you go to the council level where we are. This is Robin Myers, our president of the council. Then you go to the state, then you have national winners. At the national, you are awarded not only a medal and a certificate, but you're also awarded a monetary gift. And we're so lucky to have a young man who is not here tonight, but his parents are here, and we're going to try to read his poem. This is something, Reflection is now almost 50 years old, and we look at it as an opportunity to enrich the community. It is known that by participating in humanities, it gives a kid, a young adult, a better-rounded experience as far as being a member of our community. Since Winston-Salem Forsyth County is, take a lot of credit in being a school, a place of the arts, we're lucky to have so many people. We'd like to call out the first person, Quinn Dudley. Quinn took third place at the state level. Quinn participated in multiple categories. In Reflections, you're not just limited to one category. Next participant is Elise Mothership. Elise placed first place in the state, and that's a huge honor. Especially when you talk about photography, there were more than 2,000 entries in the high school level, and to be first in the national, first in the state, then advance to national. The next gentleman, and I wish we had his picture, but... Thank you for your patience. No, it's not coming up. This gentleman placed as a national merit winner. That gives him a $200 gift certificate, as well as a huge gold medal. This is a young man, Rakish Rashiri, from Jefferson Middle. Rakish has been participating in Reflections for many years. I knew him when he started out in the third grade, and now he's my height. And the huge thing I told him when he came up to the stage this year is, "I think you'll be a wonderful artist," he whispered in my ear, which he could at his height, that, "No, I'm gonna be a better doctor," and that just made my heart just feel good. His poem, and please bear with me as I go through it, because I can see him saying this to his friends. The title of the poem is Contrast. Blending in, looking the same. Going with the flow, just being tame. Never speaking out, speaking the same. Turning your hearing towards the wind like a flame. Not the only person fearing of to look. When you look around, the colors blend in. Looking the same. You go with the flow, just following the tame. They are speaking out the same, but not you. Look around, turn around, in the direction everyone is feared to look. Walking against the tide. You turn into the visible speak of the dust of the sand. One of the persons will see you contrary to, against the world. You speak and speak over and over, black and white. The color of your song enlightens each other's soul. You're contrary against the world. One invisible speech, the dust and the sand. One of the persons that you see. Never speak the same, never be tame. That's his poem. The theme... If he was here, he would have read it much smoother than I did, because it comes from his heart. The theme this year, and I forgot to mention that at the beginning, was show your voice. And it's so important that when you look at some of the entries, our children are really crying out for help. So I asked the members of the audience, but the members of the big community, to take a moment to listen to children's speech. Want to go ahead and announce the theme for next year. The theme for next year is "I'm hopeful because." "I am hopeful because," and the children can take it from wherever they want to. I'm going to ask the two winners to turn around and shake the board's hand, as well as Ms. McManus. Sorry for the oversight. Rakish is, this is not our poet. This is his mother. She wanted to comment. And he'll get a certificate from National as well.
And last, but certainly not least, is our board spotlight video.
The Benton Convention Center was once again host to the 2023 WSFCS Core Awards. This was the sixth annual event meant to honor the best of the best among WSFCS employees. Six winners were announced out of 115 total nominees in six different categories. The reactions on the faces of the winners show just how special it is to be recognized as a Core Award winner.
The Core Awards always reminds me of the Oscars. It is an incredible celebration of our educators and those that support education. In the end, our students and our community are the winners when there are people like you working in our schools every day.
We are so proud that you are part of Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. In fact, I believe that you are what makes Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools so amazing.
Third through fifth grade students at Easton Elementary are in full attention mode as they participate in a military-style boot camp thanks to Eddie Orvello of Burn Boot Camp High Point. The hope is that the students can apply these same concepts taught in a traditional boot camp to any adversity that they may encounter, especially while taking the very important end-of-grade test.
To have the privilege to even teach these kids at this pivotal moment, I just feel very blessed and very humble. What I really was focusing on was having them move their bodies, but letting them know that to apply those concepts when it does get rough, and they're ready for this moment.
When we were working out, he was telling us stuff like, "We can do it," and everything. "I think he can make us stronger." Like, it helps our brain get stronger.
The ERG is intimidating. I mean, you sit down at your computer, 40 questions, 48 questions, 65 questions in science. I mean, that's a lot for a 10-year-old. Telling them now that they have these skills, we know what we're doing, just keep pushing, keep pushing. Hopefully, we'll see success, and if even more, we'll see them grow.
Every year, third grade does a Mother's Day market. They study economics, and this is their way, their final project. They buy the supplies, they create the item. The students in our school can come, pick an item for someone special in their life for them to purchase, and then every year, the proceeds go to a different charity.
These third graders chose the Ronald McDonald House as the charity to support this year. In addition to the funds from the market, they also collected around 200,000 pop tops for Ronald McDonald House, all to be recycled for a great cause. This Mother's Day market proved to be a valuable lesson.
We use math to whatever the cost was for the items, and he set for pricing. I mean, they are truly entrepreneurs today, and they have great ideas. The kids have the best ideas.
They actually wrote a lot of the things on here. They actually thought of the things, "You matter," and we talked a lot about social and emotional things as well. So we're proud of them.
Navigating the financial trials and tribulations of life as an adult can be tough. So the team at Members Credit Union provided a head start for the eighth graders at Meadowlark Middle School.
We have a program called the BIDAR Reality, which is an interactive digital experience that the students can go through.
And it's going to tell you how much money that you all have and most time to spend.
It really gives the students a sense of appreciation, everyone, for their parents. It gives them a sense of realness, of what it is like.
I bought my house and my home furniture, and I already spent over $1,000. And the Student Credit Union made me pay.
I think it's exciting. I think it's fun. It's giving me a good experience on what life is like in the World War.
Eighth graders, they have no concept of money. They have no idea how much things are costing until they see these papers and they have to put it...
are costing, until they see these papers, and they have to put it in and buy a house and buy a car, and realize they can't afford two brand-new cars. So it is very eye-opening for them.
We wanted to do what we call our senior graduation walk. Wanted to celebrate our seniors, so we asked them to wear their cap and gowns, sign up for an elementary school that they attended.
All the seniors are going back to where they went to elementary school, middle school, and just walking through to get memories from when we were here.
The second part of it is to really promote graduation. We want these students that are at the elementary and middle schools to one day come to high school and graduate. When they come in in their cap and gowns, the students are just kind of beaming from ear to ear. One principal told us, there were kids that were smiling that I haven't seen smile all year like that.
It was fun, because they were so cute, they were all asking for like high fives, they were all just cheering for us, they were all like looking up to us, and they're going to be there someday, so hopefully they take it as a, as an opportunity.
But knowing that they can be, in the future, graduated and being ready, and being an example for others, is an amazing experience.
You can turn your tassel, you've graduated, from this month's edition of the WSFCS Board of Education Spotlight.
That was a great Board Spotlight. Thank you. At this time, Darrell Walker, our Chief Planning and Construction Officer, will lead us in the public hearing of the naming of the RJ Reynolds Scoreboard for the, to the Stan Elrod Scoreboard.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, Board Superintendent McManus. Staff received a recommendation to name the future RJ Reynolds Scoreboard after Stan Elrod, our former coach, principal, and central office administrator. So staff's request tonight is to open the floor for comments related to this recommendation for a future vote later tonight, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, hearing, hearing no one, thank you very much. The next order on the agenda are the public comments. At this time, we will hear the public comments on the agenda items only. If you've signed up to speak, we ask that you sit near the aisle seats closest to the podium. Please be kind and respectful, and direct your comments to me as chair. Know that we cannot talk about sensitive and private student or personnel information in this public setting. Due to the number of public comments, you will have one minute to speak, and if you have more to share, always know you can email us directly. First, Jen McGarvey.
Hi. Good thing I talk fast. Thank you very much. My name is Jen McGarvey, and I'm the parent of two students at Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. One is at a chorus performance right now at Wiley Middle School, the other one is a freshman at the Early College at Forsyth. I'm missing my seventh grader's performance tonight, because I felt it was important to stand up in support for the MOA amendment for the Early College. Our students were handpicked for the Early College because they were smart, responsible, respectful, and most importantly, they were able to advocate for themselves. We knew this when we sent them to a college campus, that they would be exposed to adults that weren't their teachers or administrators, and that was a choice that we all made when accepting their spot at the Early College. These amendments increase communication with Forsyth Tech and the ECMC, and walk the fine line of keeping students safer while also trusting them to continue to make good decisions. I would urge you to remember that pride events are not the number-one killer of kids in the US, gun violence is. Any outrage expressed tonight should be regarding the three-hour lockdown that my student had to endure after a student brought a gun to our school, as well as the inaction of our state and national lawmakers who continue to refuse anything to stem the tide of terror and violence at the hands of gun owners that kids face every day. Anything short of that is hypocritical at best, and bigotry and hatred that foments further violence at its worst. Thank you.
Thank you. Angela Levine?
Board members, Chair Kaplan, and Superintendent McManus, I'm here to speak about the revised MOA as well, and to tell you how appreciative I am for this appropriate response to the two recent events at Forsyth Tech. First, I really appreciate that the superintendent got out quickly to say that she and the community college were going to talk about revising the MOA. Second, I appreciate that her response was to focus on improving communication between the two entities. I believe that much can be accomplished through conversation, revising shared policy, and improving the way groups stay in touch better than unnecessary legislation. I especially appreciate the attention to emergency events, as I know many parents were very worried about the gun-related event that happened on campus. I believe these changes will be helpful for strengthening the relationship between our school district and Forsyth Tech, and the early and middle college programs are truly a valuable option for our high-skilled schoolers that we want to see continue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to talk about the drag show that was held over two months ago at Forsyth Tech in front of minors, where a 14-year-old girl was given a lap dance, straddled and gyrated on by an adult. Not only was this not immediately stopped, faculty actually cheered and recorded it. Minors were targeted to be a part of the show. It was held on the campus grill where high schoolers have to go eat lunch. They were also enticed with free food and drinks. I know many of you have said that the high school admin team did not know about the drag show, but I have proof that at least one high school teacher know, knew. She actually promoted it to her high school biology class via the Reminder app. That teacher is Leanne McDowan. I have already sent this to several of you, including the superintendent. There needs to be accountability. The adults who planned, promoted, and approved this should be punished. They put our children in a sexual situation and allowed a young girl to be sexually assaulted. You guys need to send a message that this will not be tolerated and happen again. We entrust you with our children every day, and we expect them to be protected and not exploited for adult entertainment. Thank you.
Thank you, and as a reminder, we don't speak of personnel information in this public setting. Next, Amanda Yocely.
Good evening. Thank you for bringing up the lap dance incident at the previous board meeting. I understand the need to review policy and procedure, but in my opinion, some incidents require consequence. I sent the board pictures in a previous email of the dancer in question. It took me five minutes to find out, he performs S and M-related shows with a gentleman they call, and I would say his name, but I can't, because there's children here, so I won't. There were many other suggestive pictures of lewd acts. I can't frame myself to say out loud, but I can show you the pictures for memory's sake. Another I won't show. If I found these pictures in five minutes, rest assured those involved in planning and advertising this event could have done the same. The incident has happened, but the bad judgment remains and should not go unpunished. Sometimes it means making an example to prevent future mistakes. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie Nelson?
Chair Kaplan, Board members, Superintendent McManus. A recent survey of our middle school students was conducted by the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools' safety team. The survey revealed less than one-third of students feel very safe in schools, and 57% feel somewhat safer with the use of metal detectors. Our children are asking us to protect them. I want to commend our school board for listening to Ray Ratley and other members of Students' Demand Action. After their presentation at a school board meeting, our board unanimously passed the Resolution on Secure Gun Storage, which is based on research showing that in school shootings, up to 80% of shooters under 18 got their guns from their own home, relatives, or friends. Safe storage of guns is an upstream intervention that keeps guns out of the wrong hands in the first place. We know we cannot rely entirely on metal detectors to keep our schools safe. Metal detectors are a downstream intervention, a last-ditch effort to keep someone from bringing a gun into our schools. Our children shouldn't have to advocate for ways to keep themselves safe in school. We need our grown-up state legislators to step up, do the right thing, and make common-sense gun laws.
Thank you. Carrie Hart?
Hello, I'm here to comment on the MOA as well. My name is Carrie Hart. I'm a parent of a student in Winston-Salem Forsyth County Public Schools, and celebrating gender diversity is important to me. Pride clubs, like the one at Forsyth Tech, do their part to create a safer environment for LGBTQ+ students and educators. I appreciate everything the board is doing to clarify communication between high school and college administration, so that pride and groups like it can help, continue to help marginalized members of the student population feel safe and seen. We owe it to our children and our students to model an appreciation for gender diversity, as doing so truly makes the world safer for us all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. What an amazing night tonight. I'm so, so happy I came to hear all these wonderful awards and recognitions. Again, my name's Amy Taylor North, I'm a parent of a freshman at West Forsyth, and tonight I want to thank each person in front of me for their service. I know I speak for many parents and teachers who appreciate the hours you pour into our schools, our students, and our larger community. I especially want to thank this board for the special recognition you offered at the beginning of all of our meetings. As a team, you make an incredible effort to represent all three arenas of public school relationship building: academics, arts, and athletics. Thank you for celebrating our kids equitably, and for recognizing what's working well within our system, and honoring the youth of our community, you elevate us all. Thank you again for your mindful service, and a very successful first year as a new team. Thank you.
Dare Luck?
High school board members, thank you for having us. My name is Dare Luck, and I was actually here last month to, after I saw the video of the TikTok that, where there was a man dressed up like as a woman that exploited and assaulted a 14-year-old girl. I was outraged then, I'm outraged now. It should have never happened. I thank y'all for whatever you're doing to make this not ever happen again on your watch. And then after that happened, I got a call from a friend that saw my picture in the paper, and said, would you go see the Glenn High School musical tonight? I couldn't, but she said, it's, they did a great performance, but it's of Mean Girls, and the, the language was much more vulgar than the movie. The sexual performance was much more vulgar than the movie, and she said, I cringed, because there was a second grader sitting behind me, hearing and seeing all this. And I'm just saying, I'm requesting that you look at that, ask Glenn for that tape and see it for yourself, and you can't say, well, that's what they hear every day anyway, because it's up to us as adults to set that role model, and to set those standards for our, for our students, to be better, to be better than what they hear every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Gray?
Good evening, Chairwoman Kaplan, Superintendent McManus, and the school board. My name is Leslie Pollak May. My allegiance, allegiance to Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools is strong. I am a student, former, sorry, I'm nervous, a former student, graduate, a parent, and a teacher. Last year, my daughter walked past a spot in her Mount Taber Hall, where two minutes later, a student was shot. She, along with many of her peers, have dealt and will continue to deal with the trauma of that day, but not once did it ever cross my mind to stand before this board and berate them for that day. But instead, I stand before you tonight to thank you for what you are doing. Thank you for implementing the I Love You Guys, a crisis response program. Thank you for your communication updates to the MOA. Thank you for allowing students to have a voice through the superintendent's Student Advisory Committee, and thank you, Superintendent McManus, for being you. I think you're simply amazing, and I hope you will be with this system until I retire.
Thank you. Lisa Sykes?
Good, my phone's cooperating. Chairwoman Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, Superintendent McManus, and board members, my name is Lisa Sykes. I am here tonight because I am not outraged. I want to commend you on your measured response last month to something that happened at a party at Forsyth Technical Community College, and I support the amendment to the MOA that is an action item here tonight. It appears to improve communication, which seems reasonable, so I thank you for your measured response to that issue.
Thank you. Sharon Taylor?
Good evening. My son just completed his freshman year at Early College, and he came home the day of the drag show and told me that although he had not gone to the event, one of his friends had, and he felt so uncomfortable and embarrassed by what he saw that he left, without getting his free pizza. For an event that was meant to be inclusive, it actually excluded a huge group of children on campus that day. I called Forsyth Tech and spoke to one of their VPs, and she was very defensive and approving of the whole event, and insisted that because early college students are also college students, that they should be expected to be exposed to adult content. I replied that the fact that they are technically college students does not trump the fact that they are minors, and the parents were not informed ahead of time, and I have a picture of one of the posters that were in the high school building that did not mention the drag show at all, but everywhere else on campus it did. And as parents, we were confused as to why the children were lured over there to that event with promises of free food, activities, music, and drinks. Something wrong happened that day, and there's been much silence about it from the people who should be standing up for our children. My husband and I have entrusted the public school system with our children's education since kindergarten, but that trust has been broken. We no longer trust those in authority to not promote and push ideologies on our children that goes against common decency. It's hard to believe that the school system has any child's best interests in mind when something wrong happens on a campus that houses our high schoolers, and no one seems to care enough to do something about it until they're forced to. James417 says, remember it is sent to know what you ought to do and then not to do it. Thank you.
Jamal Wambel? Jamal Wambel? Okay, Wambel, that's right.
Thank you, board, for allowing us to speak. I do appreciate that. I'm here to talk about the lap dance on Forsyth Tech campus, and as I said last time, this is not a tech against anybody and what they prefer to do in their own time as an adult. However, this is something that involved a minor on a school campus. Education is important. It's one of our key values as people, and I'm all for inclusion, but not at the cost of the souls of our children. Sexuality does matter, kids are not ready to be sexualized at that early age. There's a reason why there are laws for minors. They are not ready, even some adults are not ready for certain adult practices and activities. I do not know why inclusion always has to go towards debauchery, always has to go towards the sexualization of people. Inclusion can mean different forms, can mean farming, it can mean spearfishing, riverdance. Why, again, does inclusion always have to go towards sexuality? That's an agenda, and this agenda has to be fought. Sometimes you just have to say no. We used to be number one. We used to be number one in education in the U.S. Last time I checked, we fell to 17. As a school board, this is one of our key values, to focus on education and not the sexualization, excuse me, of our children. And I'll leave you with this. It's a scripture. "Lo, children are a heritage of the Lord, and the fruit of the womb is His reward." Thank you.
Jenny Easter?
Good evening. I don't really have much else to add exactly, but just to thank you again, what everybody else has said, for addressing this issue and that making the amendment helps us with communication and hopefully, parents that are angry at this situation will understand and we can all move on in this district to issues that concern our children and affect them more in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Valerie Glass?
Thank you, Chair Kaplan, Superintendent McManus, and the Board. My name's Valerie Glass. I'm the parent of three students in our schools. Next year, I'll have one child attending middle college at Forsyth Tech. The opportunities provided through the middle college are a better fit for his unique learning needs, and I'm really grateful that I have this option for him. I'm fully aware that he'll be attending a school on a college campus, and I'm confident in my relationship with him that we can have conversations about things that happen that are uncomfortable, and I'm okay with that. I have full confidence in Superintendent McManus and this MOA to be able to work out this situation regarding the drag show with the Forsyth Tech administrators. I also want to add a quick word about the metal detectors. I know that they make students and teachers feel safer, but it is a false sense of security. Our kids are smart. They're going to find workarounds pretty quickly. We don't have the full staffing and training to man these the way they need to be manned, and there's no evidence that shows that metal detectors actually prevent school violence. We need to really invest our energy and resources in the efforts that get to the root causes of school violence, helping our kids feel valued and connected, helping them have space to manage their emotions effectively, giving them tools to resolve conflicts without violence. This approach takes a lot of time to see the results, but we need to stick with it. Spending time and money on metal detectors will take away from those efforts to address the core issues of youth violence. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Daniel?
Good evening, Members of the Board. I would like to address the item tonight on the closure of Main Street Academy to move Philo Hill Middle School there. At a Tuesday, September 27, 2022, School Board meeting, the Board approved delaying three projects on the 2016 bond because of lack of growth. The current design that was approved for Philo Hill has a capacity of 600 students at a cost of $49 million. What the voters approved was $18 million. Main Street Academy has 850 seats, which could be much better utilized, holding students accountable and giving them the support they need to manage their behavior and their academics to improve the overall situation of behavior in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleen Lapina?
Good evening. This is the 20th year as a parent for me in our school district. Are drag queens above the law? Are faculty advisors to gay pride clubs above the law? Are high school administrators above the law? No, they are not. Yet, the actions of all of these adults resulted in a situation in March where multiple obscenity statutes involving a minor were allegedly violated while adults watched, cheered, and filmed. My concern is not only for the girl to whom this happened, but for the other children who were present at the event. All of you are ultimately responsible for what goes on in our schools and, most importantly, for what happens going forward. It is time for our school district to stop pushing sexual agendas on our children. It is time for our school district to start being more transparent and accountable to families. You need to promise parents that our schoolchildren will never again be exposed to drag queen shows or similar behaviors. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Lori Fuller?
Good evening. I'm here tonight as a mom of a high schooler with lots of friends in the district's Forsyth Tech programs. Thank you of others have said for working to update your MOU. It shows that we, as adults, also learn and improve and change, and I love the focus on communication and partnership. There are a lot of things that my senior is worried about. At the top of that list is concern for lack of support for his transgender, queer, and non-binary friends from the adults in their lives. Those are the things that will affect him and his generation long-term. He doesn't tell me a lot, but I heard a lot about metal detectors on the day that they were used at his school. I heard about Motrin being taken away from his rating students and being congregated out in front of the school unsupervised in an effort to prevent violence. They catch on real quick. More than I care about metal detectors or not, I wish we would figure out as a community, everyone in here, everyone watching, how to show up for our children so that they all can be safe and healthy physically, mentally, and emotionally. Thank you.
Michelle Jordan?
Good evening. I'm Michelle Jordan, and you all know me. I just wanted to, once again, just thank you all for what you're doing with updating the MOA and making sure that the communication is better. I know that we will be moving forward with that and just so that we could get on with the real business of what we need to get done in our county and with our students and our staff. And I also want to echo what Valerie Glass said about metal detectors and us looking at other solutions, having our students come up with our safe gun storage is the right way to be going and looking at what we can do for trauma resilience within our community and getting these resources for our kids. That's going to really turn around what's happening in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Raymond?
Good evening. Regarding the drag queen incident at Forsyth Tech, there were major failures at multiple levels that contributed to this incident. There was a failure in the school system, there was a failure in the school system's legal department, there was failure from the Forsyth Tech's Board of Trustees, which had to know the various activities engaged in by this student organization that invited underage students and drag queens to the same event. There was also a failure from teachers present that stood and watched, and not only did they watch, but they laughed and cheered. The MOA may have been modified, however, someone has to be held accountable. There absolutely must be accountability in this matter. We cannot allow something like this to happen without someone being held accountable. The Board may not have jurisdiction, this Board may not have jurisdiction over Forsyth Tech Board of Trustees or its administration, but you have complete jurisdiction over the Forsyth County's administration that played a role in making this event happen, the administrators and the faculty that led the students over there, and whoever else played a role in this incident. Or you can simply, you can hold the faculty and staff members that escorted them over. You can hold everyone accountable, but this incident, someone has to be held accountable for this incident, or else it's not either yourselves or law enforcement. Must hold someone accountable, or else there's nothing to stop it from happening again. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next order of business is the Superintendent's Update.
Thank you. Just a few items this evening. We started yesterday our graduation season, and so on the slide, we have early, I think this one might be early college. I'm not sure which picture this is, earlier middle, but we started yesterday at Wake Chapel. Our own Board Member Watts was the keynote for both of those ceremonies, so great job, and thank you, Board Members, that were present for that. This, on the slide, you can see the rest of them, start June 8th, and you can see the dates of all those. So we look, these are the best days to see our students walk across the stage, so just excited, wanted to remind everybody of these dates. Next slide, testing window. This is less exciting, but May 26 to June 9 is our testing window, end of grade testing, and these are our tests that all of our students have to take at the end of their school year to show mastery of the standards, and so we know our students are ready. It's just a time for them to demonstrate all that they've learned throughout the year. Reading Warriors, today, this is hot off the press, this ceremony was today to thank our tutors, and I want to just do more and more outreach for anyone that can give. It's 30 minutes, two days a week. Board Member Crowley was there today to celebrate. The stories from the volunteers brought tears to everyone's eyes in the room. The students they work with do more for them than they do, you know, on the, or vice versa. It's just, we just, it's 60 minutes a week, two times, 30 minutes, and we could probably touch almost every kindergarten and first grader that needs that extra support and really reach our 90 by 25 goal. So thank you to all these tutors, and if anybody else wants to join this, the Reading Warriors, just please reach out to, who? Paula? I don't want to say, please reach out to Terry in our volunteer office, and she will get you, puts you in the right direction. Also, very excited, last week, we had our first meeting of our Parent and Guardian Advisory Council. We met May 18 at 5:30, and really, there were 45 of the 52 parents in attendance. I still find it very amazing in our community that 800, a little over 800 parents actually applied to be on this advisory. And so this was the first night, and it was really kind of a getting to know you and then getting to know what's on your mind that we need to be bringing back to the meetings. What you will see, Board, and Brent's team has been actively creating this. It's almost ready for us to send the notes back out to the members of this team, but we are having, going to have a webpage that his team has already designed that will host all the minutes from these meetings, all the notes from these meetings, the agendas from these meetings that'll be there for the public to also see. There's also a link that, this was a recommendation by the parents in the group, there's a link for anybody that wants to send, these are things we would like you all to discuss at this meeting. In addition to that, because we had such interest, we will be hosting at least four town halls next school year in different areas of our community so that parents that did not get in and others can also come forward and have a voice and voice their concerns. And thank you to Board Member Kuhn. She co-facilitated that meeting and did an incredible icebreaker opening that was quite fun for the group. I was like, how are we going to do this with 45 people? But we did it. So thank you to the parents that came. We've actually decided, instead of four meetings a year, we are going to do one every other month because it just seems like too long to wait in between to do it quarterly. So I'm very excited about this and good things to come from the advice of our parents. Memorial Day holiday is Monday. Just want to remind, thank you to all those who have sacrificed and given their lives for our freedom. We thank all those who have served in the military, all their spouses and all their children. So happy Memorial Day, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next order of business is discussion items. First is the alternate accountability model, led by Andrew Kraft, our Chief Accountability Officer.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Superintendent McManus. Every year at this point, I bring to you the options for the alternative accountability model, and I'm doing so again this year with the same recommendations that we followed in previous years. These are the schools, so this only impacts these six schools. These are the only non-traditional schools that are impacted by the alternative accountability model, and you all have two decisions to make. The first decision is, should these schools get an alternative progress measure in addition to their school performance grade, or should they just get a school performance grade? That's the first decision. The second decision is, what if any of these schools have insufficient data? That happens rarely, but sometimes it does. What if these schools have insufficient data? How should their school performance grade be determined? So let me talk you through those two decisions. The first decision you could make, you see the three options on the Board there, and that would be the school only gets a school performance grade, and most would argue that that's not a great reflection of our non-traditional schools. And for that reason, we're recommending Option B instead, that they should get a school performance grade, which they have to get, as well as this alternative measure. The alternative measure being progressive, progressing, maintaining, or declining. And you can see how the formula here is different, where it's student persistence achievement is 60% growth. Some might argue, all of our schools should be on that model. I don't want editorialize, but there's a lot of talk at the state level now about how the overall school performance grades can be amended. And then Option C, districts have the option to go and create their own formula. So why are we choosing Option B? So years ago, you may remember Dr. Gwendolyn Johnson Green, who oversaw all our alternative schools. She led a state-level effort to create the Option B performance model, and so really, our district was the leader in creating Option B, and that's why we've always gone with Option B. So that's our recommendation to do so again this year. Okay, so that's question number one, and again, it applies to all six of these schools. Question number two is, what happens if there's insufficient data? And what I would tell you is, this happens very rarely. I had to go back and look and say, when did the last time it happened? And the answer was back in 2019 is when it happened. I've highlighted two of the schools here. Those two schools, the Special Children's School, it would not be unusual for it to happen at the Special Children's School, where they would have insufficient data that is fewer than 30 test scores, not fewer than 30 students, fewer than 30 test scores. It's possible to happen at the Children's Center, but unlikely, and it's highly unlikely to happen at the other schools based on history. So when this happened in 2019, we chose, we had chosen that year, that Board had chosen, to send the scores back to the home school. And so what I did is I looked and said, well, how many students we're talking about here and that sort of thing? And the highest number of students whose scores were sent back was two to any individual school. Total of eight kids, and the highest number that went to any individual school was two. So it had a very small impact on the schools that it was returned to. So we have two options in the case of insufficient data. Do as I said that we've done before, and that is return scores to the base or sending schools, that is what the residential school is for these kids, or keep the scores at the school and use three years' worth of data in order to calculate the school's performance grade. So it's our recommendation that we use Option A if there's insufficient data, and we use Option B, that is, to have a school performance grade plus an alternative measure as well. And that, again, affects these six schools. Are there any questions?
Board Member Kane?
Okay, so last year, 75% of our traditional, excuse me, traditional principals were against this model. If there's only two students, eight kids, that this happened to the last time we did this, why then would 75% of our high school, traditional high school principals be against this model? There seems to be something that's not adding up for me. And, you know, we asked just a little while ago for us to listen to our principals when we were talking about the number of students when we were retesting, and now we're not even talking to our principals this year about the scores. So I'm just...
Yeah, no, I'm glad you asked. You're right. If you look at the list of schools here, you know that the students who attend these schools face many challenges, and their proficiency rates are far lower than in most of our schools. And so if you ask principals at non-traditional, at traditional schools, do you want those scores sent back to you? It's not surprising, and when we've asked them before, they've said no. No, we don't want those scores being sent back to us. So it's not surprising that the principals at traditional schools say, no, we don't want the scores from these schools being sent back to the base school. But again, it's such a small number, right? That that's why we're saying that that's the best option here, because it's not going to impact those home schools very much at all. But you're absolutely right. When we've asked the question of the home school principals before, do you want these scores sent back? Their answer was no.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much. Next, Jonathan Wilson, our chief safety, security, and emergency management officer. Will discuss the middle school metal detectors.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, Ms. McManus and board. I will be brief, but I wanted to start discussion tonight just about reflecting back on something that Tricia McManus, our superintendent, shared with you at the last board meeting. And so, we conducted a survey of our students in middle and high schools to see how they felt about metal detection, how they made them feel. If you look here at this with the question of how safe do you feel at school, about 88% of our students said that they felt somewhat safe or very safe at school. So, I feel good about that. How does the use of metal detectors in your school make you feel? And we had about 73% of our students that said somewhat safer or much safer. And so, you had a much smaller amount of students that said that they felt less safe with the use of metal detectors. How frequently should metal detectors be used in West End, Forsyth County schools? About 60% of our students said that they should be used sometimes or frequently. And then, would you like to see metal detectors used in schools every day? And we clearly have a large majority that said no. So, we have those good data that we got back from Andy and his team. So, with that said, if you remember, last year or the beginning of this year, we purchased metal detectors to put in our middle and high schools. We did that to expedite folks going into events, football games, basketball games, things like that, to screen those folks that we typically don't come onto our campus each and every day. And so, we had two of those at each school. We moved towards the randomization of metal detectors and to test that out for this last quarter of school. And so, we needed to move all those metal detectors from our middle schools to our high schools in order to accomplish that in a relatively fast manner. And what we've learned is that if we, if the schools follow the plans that they put in place with the help of our security team, that we can get students through fairly quickly. We think we can do better and we will do better as time goes on, but we need a little more resources. So, with that said, we put an additional bid out for 100 additional units to be, these are the walkthrough metal detectors to backfill our middle schools and our athletic facilities. It's a lot of work to move these metal detectors, even though they're portable, they're portable from one location on a campus to another, but to move them from one campus to another and load them onto a truck and unload them and get them into a school, it's a lot of work. So, with that said, we asked for a bid for 100 additional. We had a kind of a budget in mind that we wanted to stay around $300,000. So, we sent the bid out, bids were open and if you see here, Cheya USA came back with $325,000 for 100 metal detectors. We lowered that amount and say we can do that with 94 metal detectors and Cheya is the lowest bidder at 94 units. I will say that this slide here shows $304,000. There is some tax that was not included, so I want to be transparent. And so, that total with the $2,366 in tax brings that to about 307,230. So, with any questions?
Vice Chair Bohannon.
Thank you. Just a couple. So, I think, I'll start with this. So, how many students completed the survey that you referenced earlier? Do we know?
I want to say there was right at 9,000 students. Is that right, Andy?
9,300.
Okay, about 9,300. And then, if we could go back to the slide about the feeling of the safety with the metal detectors, wanted to, thank you. Wanted to see if there was a, because I see much safer, somewhat safer, less safe, much safe. I think that the, to me, the interesting point about that particular question is that there really wasn't like a kind of midpoint, like whether or not students kind of felt kind of neutral about it. And typically in surveys like this, when you have, when you don't have the kind of neutral thing, it's more like, okay, well, what's the, what's my selection? Is it, do I feel less safe? Do I select more safe or somewhat safer? And so, I'm kind of, I think, sort of, I'm wary about kind of what this communicates in our interpretation of what this means, particularly given the fact that we've talked a lot about research, the research behind metal detectors and how it's, ultimately at the end of the day is mostly about the feel, which we want to address, which we want students to feel safe, but we also want them to actually be safe. And then, the other consideration for me is just about the funding source. So, where is the money coming from that we're gonna utilize?
So, it's coming from local funds. There was some money that we had set aside for some traffic control and the money was not used and so, it's, there was no, Tommy could probably answer that question better than I can.
For this fiscal year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, are these metal detectors the same brand of metal detectors we ordered?
So, no. What we bought in the past were Garrett metal detectors. Garrett metal detectors are traditional. I will tell you that I'm 100% against body scanners that other districts are using for many reasons. We've done a lot of research. When folks walk through body scanners, you're looking at a computer screen as opposed to looking at behavior. You're not having any interaction with students. I've conducted metal detecting myself as long with, along with my staff so that we can see how it works. We can't ask teachers and staff members at schools to do it if we don't feel comfortable doing it ourselves. So, it is an opportunity to interact with students. I have, I honestly have a good time when I do it. I don't want to do it every day, but I would say that it is an opportunity to talk to students and see how, and I talk to them when, even when I'm not participating and my staff or other school staff are doing it, I'll walk around as they come through. How's this make you feel? Do you feel bad about it? I mean, I have mixed results. Talk to staff members, how does this make you feel? And so, there is some apprehension in doing it. You guys know, I was very transparent in our safety workshop about how I feel about metal detectors. I have a love-hate relationship with them because are they 100%? Absolutely not. Are they something? Yes. And so, what we're saying by purchasing these additional metal detectors is having them at our disposal when we need them.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Board member Coon? Oh, I'm sorry, board member Watts.
So, Jonathan, how many metal detectors were moved from the middle school to the high school?
So, with, I'm just throwing a number out here. So, we had 14, 15 what we classify as middle schools. We moved all those into our high schools and the ones that we had in stadiums were moved back as well. So, for instance, you may have at East Forsyth and West Forsyth, somewhere around six to seven metal detectors in order to do it efficiently. Other schools, you can do it with two to three. So, all of them were moved back with the exception of maybe two that are still sitting at a middle school right now, but our stadiums as present have no metal detectors at all. So, we can move those back and again, these are still portable.
My question is asking because we're buying 100 or 93, 94, was that the number moved from the middle school to the high school level or is this just a replacement?
So, there was an additional amount, so, again, we bought two for high school and two for middle school. That was not enough to do anything about what, like we're doing now. So, we see that we need additional, but we also need to backfill those as well. So, you know, if East Forsyth and West Forsyth needed seven and we only had two, everything that we've taken away is being used in our, in our high schools to cover the doors that we need.
So, the purchase will actually replace the ones we've had in the middle school with an addition of how many additional?
With additional. I mean, I wish I had that number for you, but I mean, it's, what are we using right now? We're using 64 right now in high schools. So, we, I think we need about 64, you know, in middle schools and then we need to put them in our stadiums. So, this should give us enough to do what we need with some additional because we need, other schools need more than they're even using today and then put them in our stadiums where they're not moved around. I think the moving around is gonna create wear and tear on the devices and even though we have a large, you know, extended warranty on those things, I don't want to break them.
Any other questions? Board member Coon.
And is the plan to still use them in the same way as we're doing them with the high schools to be random? It's not gonna be, we're not planning on changing the way we're using them? Is that, or is that?
I have no desire to use these every day in every school. So, I'd say that they would still to be used on a random basis, to be used when we have a threat at a school and to be used at events.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Deion Jenkins, our chief legal counsel will discuss the amendment to the MOA with Forsyth Technical Community College.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, members of the board and superintendent. I am going to summarize for you the changes that are proposed in the amendment to our memorandum of agreement with Forsyth Technical Community College. In 2021, the board approved a comprehensive MOA with Forsyth Tech to encompass all of the various programs and partnerships that we have with the college. Prior to that, there were several different MOAs for different programs and so, it just made sense to consolidate it all into one place. In light of recent events that happened back in March and April, there was a need and a desire to update and amend some language in the MOA to assist with enhancing communication and collaboration between both of the organizations, particularly in times of emergencies or other events. And so, I want to walk you through briefly and summarize the changes and then I'll be happy to take any questions that you have. The first, the first proposed change is intended to clarify and beef up, for lack of a better word, the relationship between the college liaison and the administration of early and middle college. And we know that there is definitely a relationship there and there's communication that happens, but this is intended to require there to be more of a regular cadence of meetings and communications with this individual that would include events that are happening on the campus of Forsyth Tech as well as other updates related to the college that the early middle college administration needs to know, particularly in light of if there are events that are happening so the administration at early middle college can decide if there are events that are not appropriate for the, for district students to attend, they can make arrangements to do so. The second change is in regards to technology. In meeting with Forsyth Tech recently, there, we learned that there is a system that they use to communicate, that they call Tech Link. That's where they send out a lot of their newsletters and updates about events and other information that pertain to Forsyth Tech employees. Because our early middle college employees are on their campus, they are entitled to access to that same information. But, it appeared as though there was not, the ease with which using that system was not there. And so, this section is intended to help provide additional support and another method of communicating whenever there are events and things that happen at Forsyth Tech is making sure that our employees have easy access to those Tech Link alerts. Also, whenever there are alerts that happen, if there's an emergency or something that happens, Forsyth Tech sends out text messages via their tech alert system. This provision would also allow certain senior-level members of our organization, so that the superintendent, the deputy, our chief safety, security, and emergency management officer, as well as the area superintendent, to receive those same alerts via text message they had not received in previous. The next change is, again, kind of a reiteration regarding access to Forsyth Tech facilities. In the event there is an event that's happening on campus that the early middle college administration deems is not appropriate for our students, that the college agrees to cooperate to allow, continue to allow access to other parts of the college for classes and other events that happen during the school day. The next change is another, another change that is intended to enhance the safety communications. This would amend the MOA to clarify that while the Forsyth Tech Safety and Security Office is primary in the event of some sort of a crisis or emergency happening on campus, that we as a school district also are, that we agree to collaborate, basically, that we agree to have more communication and we agree to work together in response to any emergency that happens on campus. And then, the last section in conjunction with enhancing and increasing safety for our students, just acknowledges that the school system is primarily responsible for communicating with our families about events that happen, emergencies and crises that happen on campus of Forsyth Tech that impact our students directly. And there also is, there also are provisions in this addendum that would allow us to have access to security cameras for the buildings that are used primarily by early and middle college so that we can monitor in the event of an emergency or crisis that happens on campus. And so, with that summary, I do want to just make sure to say for the record that all the other provisions of the MOA are still in effect. This just adds to that MOA. That MOA is actually not set to renew until 2024 and so, it will remain in full force and effect until the renewal happens next year. So, with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes. Board member Wood.
Thank you, Deion. If you recall, one of the first questions I asked after the events of March 22nd following was what was the nature of the memorandum of agreement that we had? And while this is probably not a panacea for every conceivable situation we might think about for the future, I do think it's a step in the right direction. But, it's going forward. I think maybe the folks that are here tonight and the folks had concerns about the event of March 22nd. Can you update us a bit on the status of any investigation that has occurred or is occurring relative to the event that occurred on March 22nd with the Drag Queen and the Lab Dance episode?
Yes, sir. So, as of this morning, the most recent update that I have is that the district attorney's office is still reviewing the matter. It's still, it's still ongoing and so, I don't have any additional updates, but I assume that if there are any further changes or updates in the status, that they will contact us and let us know.
One other question.
Yes.
Madam Chair. One of the things that's been difficult for me to, to explain to people that ask about the situation, the relationship between the school system and the Forsyth Technical Community College. Does the, and I'm not sure it's defined well enough to my satisfaction in this memorandum of understanding, but does the fact that we have an agreement with Forsyth Tech for the early college and the middle college on their campus and it falls during a time in which we have responsibility for the care and keeping custody of the students, does that render Forsyth Tech in any sort of technical way, does that render that as one of our campuses during that time while they're there? Is that a reasonable question to ask?
So, if, are you saying does that make it essentially a public school campus? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, during that time, yes.
So, the Forsyth Tech, I mean, the college campus remains a college campus. We have students that attend a program that's placed on their campus, but it does not bring that college within the realm or the jurisdiction of the Board of Education. It's still a college campus, it's just we have a program that's placed there. Now, the program is a public school program, but it doesn't change the nature of the real estate or the property that's there. We have jurisdiction over the program and the students while they're there. I hope that answers your question.
Almost, yeah. It gets a good way. Thank you, Deion, I appreciate it. I do think while this is not a panacea, I do think this revised memorandum is a step in the right direction and I intend to support it tonight, but I hope we will keep in mind that perhaps it's susceptible to future revisions if necessary.
Sure. The MOA can always be reviewed and revised.
Thank you, Deion.
And Deion, I've heard numerous, numerous times that staff might have been there during that performance. Have we, have we investigated that and, you know, what were the outcomes? Was there staff there?
So, we, the matter is under investigation, however, I cannot comment on personnel issues in public, so I'd be happy to talk with you about that enclosed.
So.
Vice Chair Bohannon.
Thank you. Deion, I just had a couple of questions. Do we, and I apologize if this is sort of an obvious answer, but do we pay Forsyth Tech any money for the facility, use of facilities? Like, what is the nature of sort of our financial relationship?
So, the, there is an exchange of monies. In particular, for early middle college, the college liaison is a position that we contribute to financially. We pay a portion of their salary and we are involved in hiring and the supervision, so to speak, of that person. There are other monies exchanged, however, I apologize, I cannot recall all of those off the top of my head, but I know specifically with regard to early middle college, there's a portion that we pay towards the college liaison salary.
Okay. And then, my last sort of question slash kind of point is, so to your, to the statement you just made in response to, I think, board member Woods' question about our relationship, so sort of physical relationship is in we are responsible for the program there and the students that are housed at the facility, but it's Forsyth Tech's facility, that would sort of kind of lend, lend itself to the notion that it remains important that we're kind of in lockstep because we're sort of in a very close, tight relationship. So, it's important that from our perspective, but also from Forsyth Tech, Forsyth Tech's perspective, that they understand their responsibility in that and so do we. Would that, would you, would you agree with that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next order of business is action items. First, consider approval of the alternate accountability model. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion by Board Member Crowley. We have a second by Board Member Watts. Any discussion?
I just want to be, this is for the option B, the, the one in the middle, the one that we've been doing. Okay.
And then option A on the second.
Option A. I think it's option B and A. Is that right? Together? Combined? Okay. Okay. Any further discussion? So we have a motion and a second, all in favor. Opposed? Okay. So we have eight in favor, one opposed. The motion passes. Next, consider approval of the purchase of the metal detectors. Do I have a motion?
Moved to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Board Member Coon. We have a second by Board Member Barr. Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
I just hope that we continue having other discussions on other ways of safety beyond metal detectors in our building.
I agree. Any further discussion? Yes?
I just want to, Mr. Krantz, just as a confirmation, these are saving, we are utilizing savings from this fiscal year in local dollars.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion, second, we've had discussion, all in favor. That's unanimous. Next, consider approval of the amendment for the MOA with Forsyth Technical Community College. Do I have a motion?
Moved to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion by Board Member Miller, a second by Board Member Barr. Any further discussion? All in favor. That is unanimous. Thanks. Next, consider approval of the naming of the RJ Reynolds scoreboard, the Stan Elrod scoreboard. Do I have a motion?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Board Member Miller, a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? All in favor? All in, all in favor? Okay. That's unanimous. Thank you. Next, consider approval of the Glenn High School tennis court renovation. Do I have a motion?
Moved to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Watts. Any discussion?
Yes. So for this item, and, and maybe I missed something. So for this item and the next item, the actual bids are not in here, so the request is to pre-author, basically to, to approve, to approve a project without the bids currently in, that, that's the ask.
Yes.
There was surprise.
Those bids are coming in now. They won't come back to you only if they're over budget, but the, the recommendation is to approve it within the budget that we have.
Okay. Is there a, is there sort of a, because I know this is a, this is sort of an atypical practice. Is there something that happened? Or?
Yeah, but just because we're kind of running up against the, the window of time here over the summer and trying to get things planned and supplies ordered, we're, we're kind of in a really tight box.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? So we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Okay. Thank you. That's unanimous.
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm abstaining.
Okay. And one abstained, abstained. Motion passes. Consider approval of the Winston-Salem Prep Academy track resurfacing. Do I have a motion?
A motion to approve the track resurfing at Winston-Salem Preparatory Academy.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion from Board Member Watts and a second from Board Member Miller. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Okay. Motion passes. Eight, eight in favor, one abstaining. Next, consider approval of the authorization of the North Carolina Education Lottery Funds for the payment of the 2013 and 2015 bond debt service. Do I have a motion?
Moved to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? So we have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Coon. No, no discussion. Okay. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thanks. Consider approval of the Philo Hill move and the use of the fund balance. Do I have a motion?
I moved, we approve the Philo Hill move and fund requests from the fund balance.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion from Board Member Watts, a second from Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? Okay. We have a motion and a second, all in favor. Okay? Opposed? Abstain? Okay. So we have eight in favor, one abstain. Motion passes. Next, consider approval of policy 4115 assignment, teach, transfer and promotion of personnel.
Moved to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Coon. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Next is consider approval of the Magnify Learning Contract. Do I have a motion to approve?
Moved to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Board Member Miller, a second by Board Member Wood. Any discussion?
Just one discussion.
Okay.
This is a contract that the individual school has requested, correct? For staff development?
Yes.
Thank you. Using Title I funds.
Using Title I funds?
It is Title I, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes. Okay. Thank you. So we've had a motion, a second, discussion. Any further? Okay. All in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. Next, consider approval of the child nutrition point-of-sale software, RFP. Do I have a motion?
Moved to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Who's second?
You can let it turn.
Okay. Okay. So we have a, a motion by Board Member Crowley. We have a second by Board Member Brown Gaither. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. Our next order of business is the consent agenda items.